This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May meeting of the Finance Committee and the full board here at the Dulles State Office Building in Watertown. For members of the public attending remotely, we ask that you please close other programs on your computer or phone, silence your cellphone, and mute your audio when not speaking. Agendas for today's meeting are available at hrbrrd.gov under Board Meetings. The conference organizer will monitor the program's chat function for public comment. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now call on Chairman Mr. Dewitt for the Finance Committee meeting.
I called the Finance Committee order, and I think we have the Pledge of Allegiance. A roll call, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Ken Dewitt.
Here.
Committee Member Albert Hayes.
Here.
Committee Member Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Alfred Candido.
Here.
Board Member Nicole Allen.
Here.
Board Member Richard Byrd.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan is me and is here. Chief Engineer Robert Fulton.
Here.
CFO Tim Manicha.
Here.
Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Ruzicki.
Here.
And Mr. Leslie is excuse.
John. And can I have a motion to adopt or revise the meeting agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second, that was second discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion move forward. May have approval of the April 9, 2024 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes. Can we make that motion?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approved. Committee Business, new business. Discussion of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027 Draft Budget. Mr. Manicha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All of you can find the materials prepared for this discussion on page five of your packet. Given that we will be given what will be heading your way next month, namely our recommendations for budgets for the next three fiscal years, in accordance with our enabling statute, it seems useful to review the statutory requirements of the regulating district's budget process. That way, when the discussion turns to specific items next month, these statutory requirements will be refreshed in everyone's mind. Before turning to the budgets for the upcoming three-year cycle, let's just turn the clock back a few months to when we were discussing the audited financial statements for the year that ended June 30, 2023. When our auditor, Nora Fleros, was with us, she described a single financial statement audit, not multiple financial statement audits. She had told because the regulating district is just a single legal entity, thanks to the consolidation that took place back in 1959. While that legislation that consolidated the Black River Regulating District and the Hudson River Regulating District into a single entity, it also stipulated that the regulating district should continue to maintain separate financial records and segregate funds for each area. And it is for this reason that we report each month Hudson River Area and Black River Area, as well as the regulating district as a whole. And that is why we see separate sections on these pages for the Hudson River Area to the left of the document on page five, six, and seven, and Black River Area to the right. So with that in mind, let's review the sources of funds in each area. They are similar, but they are not the same. I share with you figures from the budget of the current fiscal year, which the board adopted back on June 9, 2021. And at the top of the left, you'll see the reservoir operating agreement that we had in place at the time that that budget was adopted with Erie Boulevard Hydro Power. We have talked quite a bit about that over the last 10 or 11 months, and we reflected in the budget at the time, the 1.5 million that was in agreement at the time, in place at the time. There was a similar agreement in the Black River Area with Stillwater Associates. You can see them out there. I think all of you are, as you continue to kind of move down the page, I think all of you are familiar with the revenue from the access permit system on Saucony Lake, and this is a source of funds only in the Hudson River Area. And that's why you don't see anything over to the right on the Black River Area for that source. The headwater benefits charge rose from the resolution of the litigation with Hudson River Area hydro producers over a decade ago. It is governed by provisions of the Federal Power Act and has not changed since it became a source of funds for the regulated district for the Hudson River Area in 2016. It will change modestly during the next three-year cycle as another of the hydro producers downstream from Conquinnville starts making payments to the regulated district. All of these sources plus interest earnings and any bond proceeds are considered non-assessment revenue, and this amount is deducted from our best estimate of expenses to arrive at the amount needed to be raised from assessments in each area. Now, before we go to that final step, we need to calculate the state's share of that assessment. And thanks to the 2013 reapportionment in the Hudson River Area, Hudson River Area Counties and the state, along with the regulating district, agreed that the state would cover 22.28% of the estimated expenses less the non-assessment revenue. This amount is subtracted to arrive at an amount which will be assessed based on a formula to the five Hudson River Area Counties. And that formula is based on a very thoughtful and comprehensive estimate of the benefits received downstream for flood control and flow augmentation services that the regulating district provides.
And it's probably here and I just haven't seen it yet, looked at it, but for Brookfield, what did you put in for the budget with Brookfield? Is it the 1.5?
It sure is.
Okay. Now for Conquinnville then, for them, what was the amount for Conquinnville?
When you, can you say a little bit more about?
The dam that we're not getting any revenue from right now.
So that money arises from state budget process, if I'm following along?
The 1.5 million that they're not paying us right now, if I got that right, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so what did you use for budget or for purposes of this?
So what we're talking about, just for illustration purposes, the numbers that are reflected here are budgets for the current fiscal year that we're in the 11th month right now.
Okay.
I thought that it would be, it would be the budgets that we will recommend to the board next month change at a minimum.
I just wanted to know what the difference is.
And sometimes multiple times per day, so I figured let's just use for illustration purposes the amounts that are already in effect.
Or Tim, barring some change, that number, the next budget will be zero.
Correct. So we have covered most of the sources in both areas. Let's just scroll down a little bit. Now it's down to sort of to page six, and you'll see a breakdown of the uses of funds. And here, unlike with the sources where there is some variation, when it comes to the uses of funds, pretty similar. Pretty similar differences in magnitude, of course, because Hudson River Area is about three times the size of the Black River Area in terms of operating funds, but generally used for same purposes, right? We have operating side of the expense ledger mostly for people and other expenses that are required to help the regulating district work every single day. The vast majority of these expenses are recurring. And then on the capital side, we incur contractual expenses largely for engineering services and for construction of rehabilitation work that the regulating district oversees at its structures. In addition to being for a longer time horizon, given the nature of capital projects, these capital expenses tend to be non-recurring. So when you go now down to the, to the last page here, just wanted to lay out steps that are stipulated in our enabling statute, just the mechanics of how we arrive at expenses, general board expenses, which covers the cost of folks who work and do stuff that applies to both areas. They get allocated based on the relative share of the Black River Area, the Hudson River Area to the total. We then take away all that non-assessment revenue that we talked about before, calculate the state share for the Hudson River Area, any amount appropriated by the state each year less that 22.18%, goes to the Black River Area, and then it's down to the beneficiaries for the assessment. In the Hudson River Area, that assessment's paid by the five downstream counties, Albany Ressler, Saratoga, Washington, and Warren. A little bit different in the Black River Area where almost 93% of the assessment is still borne by hydro producers, and the balance is picked up by five downstream counties in the Black River Area, Hamilton, Hurt, Merle, and Ida, Lewis, and Jefferson. And so that's, that's a lot to say in ten short minutes, so let me pause and ask if anybody else has questions about any or all of the sources, the uses, or the mechanics of how we put together the three fiscal year budgets that we will have before you at the June meeting.
One more question on the uses. Under the taxes, under the uses, after capital materials contractual.
Yep.
And then taxes.
Yes.
Is that property tax? I thought that was being weighed.
It, it used to be, so at the time, you gotta.
Have I got backwards?
No, 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 you have it exactly right, but you just have to dial back to June 8, 9, 2021. The regulating district still was statutorily required to make real property tax payments that were estimated at the time of $3.3 million, thanks to support from everyone at this table, or work from everyone at this table, and our partners in state government. We were able to have that expense shifted from the regulating district onto the state, and was a tremendous benefit to solving a longstanding structural deficit that the regulating district wrestled with every day.
And the income side?
Yep.
Am I missing it? Where's the state contribution?
So the state share is, if you look at, probably just at the symphony top on my sheet here, and read above where it says interest on page, the top left of page six.
Okay.
New York State Share, it's $960,446 in the Hudson River Area, the balance in the Black River Area, and that, you know, for the last few years, state in its state operations corporation bill has appropriated 1.25 million to the regulating district for its share. That calculation takes place, so that's how we figure out how much goes to the Hudson River Area, how much goes to the Black River Area, and that amount changes in every budget that we put forward.
And then just, do you have a round two calls this way? So do you have, no, I want to say it to there. Did you, do you have an estimate about what you think that's going to be for the counties?
Yeah. I think that as we sit here today, I can say that we believe that the assessment increase in the Black River Area will go up by less than it went up the last time we put forth these budgets, meaningfully less, I believe. And I believe that in Hudson River Area, we will see decline, and that decline will be a meaningful reduction in the Hudson River Area Counties' assessment as well. I could give you the number today. By the time, by the time you get back to the office, it will have changed, and it'll change even more so tomorrow and every day forward until we stamp the packet and send it to you probably in the early to mid part of June in anticipation of the June 20 meeting.
Just on the wild thing that somebody may ask me, all I'm gonna need to remember is.
Moving in the right direction.
It'll be less.
Moving in the right direction in both areas.
If somebody asks.
Moving in the right direction in both areas, thanks to many of the things that we've discussed here and lots of blood, sweat, and tears. If anyone else want to talk further, because we got the room all day, so. We got two hours, pardon.
I got the shortest distance to go, so I'm good. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Yeah, we got a second.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your questions. End of discussion. I'd like to call the May Board Meeting on the Hudson River, Black River Regulating District Order. Roll call, Mr. Callahan.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
First Vice Chair Ken Dewitt.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Alfred Candido.
Here.
Board Member Nicole Allen.
Here.
Board Member Richard Byrd.
Here.
Board Member Albert Hayes.
Here.
Board Member Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan is me and is here. Chief Engineer Robert.
Here.
CFO Tim Manicha.
Here.
Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Ruzicki.
Here.
And Mr. Leslie is excuse.
Thank you. I know of no guests here. I'm sorry, I need a motion to adopt the meeting agenda. I know of no reason for to revise. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I know of no guests. There's nobody here for public comment, but is there anybody online who wants to make a comment?
Megan, can you indicate whether anybody has signed up online and requested to speak?
No one has requested to speak.
We do have one public viewer, Mr. Moran. Do you wish to address the board?
No, thank you, just listening.
Okay. Listen away. So next I need the approval of the April 9, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I don't know.
Any further additions, corrections, or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to report of the Executive Director, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report appears on pages 19 and 20. Just a few things of note. You'll also see in your packet and transmitted to you separately via email, there's a memo detailing the steps that Mr. Manicha will take relative to budget bulletin B 1152. That prescribes salary raises for MC employees in the state in accordance with the salary schedule that the board opted into via Resolution 151705 in 2015. I have any questions on that? I'll pause at the end of my report, and I don't have anything else. We also, I don't want to steal Stephanie Ruzicki's thunder to a great extent, but we got the good news, obviously. We sort of came into the purchase of the Stillwater Hydroelectric Plant kicking and screaming a little bit, but happy to report that after reaching an agreement with Mr. Tucker yesterday, the Attorney General had already approved the contract yesterday. We received notice that the Office of State Controller had approved the contract, so we have an executed agreement. Also noteworthy is that we had Mr. Fulton and I very productive and encouraging site visits, site visits to the potential bidder for the new lease on the Stillwater Hydroelectric Plant, and we are hosting a virtual site visit and question and answer session tomorrow as well. So we have some reason for optimism that we'll get a good new lessee into that plant sometime after the starting of the fiscal year.
John, you mentioned reaching out to the power authority. Was there no interest from the power authority?
No interest in operating the plant. I do want to thank the New York State Power Authority for really invaluable assistance on reviewing and issuing the RFP that we put out, also some strategy relative to our, at the time, continued negotiations with Mr. Tucker, and they have expressed a willingness to come out to the plant and provide an assessment. That is something that we thought might be necessary to garner OSC approval, but it was not. We still think that might be useful to us at some point, depending on how the rest of the competitive procurement goes, but really they provided a great deal of assistance on this whole issue, for which we're very grateful but did not want to come in as a subsequent outwork. Want to note also, just a reminder, this Thursday, we'll be at the Saucony River Field Office with various law enforcement agencies kicking off National Safe Voting Week, which officially begins Saturday. That'll be at 10:00 a.m., rain or shine, so we hope that everybody that's in the area and whose schedules will allow them to attend will do so. It's always a great way for us to very publicly show our support in what work these first responders and enforcement agencies do. As the board is aware, we've really stepped up to the plate, improvements to our docking system for first responder vessels, and of course, the life jacket motor station restaurant. Looking forward to that, and then a week from Thursday, we will host the multi-agency exercise, annual training exercises as well. And lastly, I don't want to steal too much of Fulton's thunder either, but increasingly we've been talking with Mr. Leslie, Mr. Manicha, Mr. Fulton, primarily relative to strategy with the contractor that we used on the Hawkinsville Dam project, which we had a good project. We have, for the most part, a finished project. There are some issues that we are still working through with the contractor, and I expect we'll be back formally to the board to talk about some of those things. Primarily, this revolves around the retainage that we are still holding on to, a potential change order that the contractors requested. And I note that absent the retainage, we have paid the full approved as amended contract value authorized by the board, and we are hoping to come to a resolution with the contractor where we write a final check, and they go their separate way, and we put just a few finishing touches on this project. But I think Mr. Fulton will touch on that briefly today, and I expect we'll be back to talk in greater detail with the board.
I know it's pretty fluid, but how much are they asking?
Well, that's a more complicated question than it ought to be, Mr. Chairman, but there is the matter of, in the first instance, the change order that Mr. Fulton has reviewed and analyzed for additional work to install trash racks, so to protect the inlet structures from debris and things that would otherwise be stuck in, that were not included in the design completed by the clinchmen. That, we believe, is a reasonable expense. However, there is also a matter of some disparity between the actual plan specifications for the embankment slope and what has been constructed, and we believe we'll have to go back and do some work there, not major work, but that work, the cost of that work to the regulating district may exceed those other reasonable expenses that Mr. Fulton has reviewed, and I don't want to speak for Chief Engineer. There is another change order that the contractor has submitted that we feel attempts to relitigate expenses that in Mr. Fulton's diligent review and approval of requests for payment throughout the project were denied because of various reasons, and we're still seeking to claw some of that money back, and that would be all in excess of the board's authorized contract.
Do we want to ask any questions on what you just talked about, or wait till?
I think Robin, Robin touched on it in his report, but absolutely.
So first question, on the bog catching thing, or whatever the heck it was, that change order, whatever that thing is, did they, did we put a, did they put in a change order on it? Did we agree to that before?
Yes, they submitted a change order.
So that we agreed to it?
A change order.
Got that. And you're telling me that slope they guaranteed us when we were there that day didn't hold?
It held. It's holding.
I haven't gone by it. If I had time enough, I'd go and do it.
It just doesn't conform to the, you can see the portion of it that don't conform.
You're, I think Mr. Reagan may be referring to the slope on the opposite side. We're talking about the.
You're talking about the West Bank.
Yes.
Talking about the West Bank.
So the West Bank, there are no issues with the West Bank.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Like you see, earthen embankment on the opposite side.
The dam on the east side is.
Now I've got a tranquilizer, I'll look at that.
I encourage you to take a look at it.
It does look good.
Nice, shiny new facility. Shiny as a dam.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pause for any other questions.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Next, contracts and actions. First is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of $17,681.54 for additional repairs to the Caterpillar backhoe. Again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution appears on page 21. The board will recall, we came to the board recently to authorize payment on some work for the outriggers on the backhoe. Mentioned at the time that there was an issue also with the boom. The boom has got some significant play in it. Currently, the boom cannot be configured to put the safety in, the safety pin in correctly for transport, and also as the boom is swinging, especially in close proximity to other structures and doing the great work that our folks do, it's tough to control. We did look at replacement costs for a new machine, and that's an estimated $115,000. So we thought that the, that the investment here to keep this machine in good and safe working order of $17,681.54 was justified, and we asked the board to support even more repairs.
John, a question on that. I can't remember how much we paid, we agreed to last meeting or two meetings ago.
Just about $6,000.
$6,000? And how long now, once we put that, $23,000 or $24,000, is this gonna, what do we have, five, 10 years out of it?
So the machine, I can't speak to its useful life, but it's about, it's a 1997 machine.
Yeah.
And overall, it's in good working order. Our folks, when they can, repair things in-house. They recently replaced the glass on the cab instead of sending it out, huge savings. We have very, very talented people. There's some work they can't do, but I am confident that our folks can continue to keep the machine in good working order, absent sort of the need for these more generational repairs.
Those are minor repairs, it's not what you're thinking about. After this, we've got something that is, everything we know right now should last a few years. So there's no problem with, I mean, it's not anything where we're just putting money in, money in.
We're not, we're not putting good money after bad. It's overall a good machine, and we'd like to keep it going.
Okay, any further discussion? Then I need a motion authorizing the expenditure of $17,681.54 for the additional repairs.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion, questions? In that case, all in favor? Any opposed? Next, a discussion regarding policy governing the use of electric vehicle charging stations at the regulating district facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see in your packet, there's what today, a memo detailing our work to investigate best practices with other agencies that maintain these chargers in response to board questions at the previous. in response to board questions at the previous meeting. It was very enlightening to reach out to some of these agencies and hear what they are doing. So we thought we would come back to the board with some recommendations, open it up for discussion and see what direction the board would like to go, whether it's adopting a formal policy or expressing comfort with the direction that staff is taking to regulate sort of the use of these machines once they exist. And if you look down at the bottom of the second page of the memo, we would recommend that the spots for the EV chargers be spenciled EV charging only. Signs be erected that EV charging is available to HR, VR, RV visitors and guests only. First come, first served, maximum no, maximum four hours with no overnight parking. We would review usage data from EV Connect, which is the app that people will utilize on a quarterly basis to identify the extent of any after-hours or weekend use, which I know is one of the things we have been concerned about. And we would provide an annual report to the board detailing usage, at which time we could amend the direction we're going or how we're treating these. And so with that, just pause for any questions.
Now, these wouldn't charge Teslas, correct?
It is a, it is a level-two charger, Mr. Chairman, so I.
But the ends on the Teslas are different.
Yeah. We don't, we have not ordered, to my knowledge, any specialized doctors.
There isn't any.
There aren't any?
There is one gentleman, not to high speed. I'm wrong.
John, I haven't really got a lot of questions on that. So my viewpoint was only, it looked really very simple. I don't think you guys need to do a report and do more work for it for yourself. I want you to do that. Just when there's a complaint or something, I'd like to see a process, which I saw in your thing. I think it was broad enough to cover most things. So it's not something we'll have to change in a year or two. Because I've always believed that if you put a policy in, it's easier to lessen its impact than go back the other way and not create any harmful things. I read it, I looked at your notes. You know, I think, you know, if everything keeps going the way it is, the number that are going to go there will probably increase unless something drastically changes, I guess. But I think your policy covered that. And you've got something now for your employees to say, here's our policy. I don't want a report. Maybe everybody else does, but I don't want it.
We're happy to forego the report unless we find it's necessary at the board's.
So this is not, we're not charging for this service?
Not, not intending to. And we found in talking to the other public entities that are detailed here that that's the common approach. Although, you'll note in the memo, there were a couple of agencies, parks in particular, that thought there may come a time when they need to implement some charge to regulate use, but have not yet. And I'm sure somebody will go first in figuring that out. But the, but we will have that option with, through the app at whatever time.
It's like giving somebody free gas. I mean, I don't care, it's okay to start it that way.
I care if you get free gas. I think you at least put a donation to it. And some kids that don't have any beer money can go rob the kids some beer money.
No, I think, Mr. Chairman, if, you know, based on the policies the state has enacted, so many of these things are designed to encourage the transition away from fossil fuels, like the mandate on the state vehicle, you know, light, light state vehicles first and ultimately heavy vehicles to transition to EVs as well. So this is, like a lot of other agencies and authorities, are kind of stepping our toe in the water for the first time. We're going to learn a lot. I'm sure it will grow, as Mr. Reagan said. And I don't think there's any question. They will in a couple of years, maybe quicker timeframe or beyond that. Need to revisit and adjust as necessary. We feel that this is a very positive step forward.
I saw YouTube with a gentleman. He had a private unit in his driveway on his property. And a woman pulled in, and he went out there and he says, well, I'm sorry, you can't do this. She's, yes, I can. And by the time, you know, I don't, I didn't follow the rest of it. But by the time the argument was over and the police came, she was charged up.
Okay. So this was just a discussion, there's no?
Yeah, unless, Mr. Chairman, I just note that the board did want to adopt the formal policy. We could count this as the second meeting where it was discussed. And then we would bring the policy to the third meeting, the next meeting. But if it's not necessary, we will just proceed accordingly, as we've outlined here.
I think we should proceed accordingly. That's my opinion. Everybody feel the same way?
Question.
Okay, then let's have a motion to proceed.
When will these be ready to be used? Are they?
Well, we've got a site visit this week by Solar Liberty. They are very busy these days. We're, I don't, I don't know exactly where we fall in the schedule, but it's our anticipation that the solar panels and chargers will be in sometime this fall.
Curious.
Yeah.
If we don't have to move into a policy that we won't be in place.
Okay, do we have a motion to proceed with the electric vehicle charging stations? I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, comments? All in favor?
What else? Ask a question?
Proceeding.
I think he would just put a.
Yeah.
I think, I thought we were, I thought we were making a motion. I thought we already made a motion to spend the money.
Yes.
So that's what it's for.
Okay, proceed.
We did not necessarily need a vote, but I think if there is a vote, the vote would be on enacting the five recommendations outlined in the memo. And that would be at the bottom of page two, our recommendations to take the following steps, the spenciles, the signs. It sounds like the board might forego the annual report. So it would be maybe the four recommendations without.
It'll suggest waiting until fall before we implement the policy. So is, what did you say?
And there's just a question of timing, because there's no reason to adopt the policy now when installation won't be for five, six months.
And this is really only on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, as a discussion item.
That's fine. I didn't know whether we could proceed without the vote.
We've got the, we've got the authorization from the board to, for the contract and for all the work. So we don't need anything at this time, but of course, if we wanted to.
So are your recommendations, your recommendations as on how the signage is set? Is that going to be the policy or?
We did not.
Are you going to at least provide us a actual policy document?
So in discussion with Mr. Leslie, we did not think necessarily that a formal policy was necessary. But we thought the board might elect to adopt the formal policy. We don't, we can take these, I put this in the category of a lot of staff-level decisions that the board and trust staff can make. But we knew that there was some concern on exactly what level of clarity we would provide our customers and people walking in and maybe accosting office staff, that sort of thing. So we're, we're ready to enact these steps as indicated on the memo. We do not need additional board authorization. If the board wanted to adopt the formal policy, it would not do so at this meeting, because this is only the second meeting where we've discussed it and we believe that.
Okay.
So to, 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 to what Tim had said earlier, I agree with him that I think we need a policy. And I think the policy is best for everyone, even staff, because as you go into a gray area, sometimes you get into the fog and the clouds and you'd like to know where your beacon is that you can stick to. So it's like, so I think it behooves the staff to look to the board to adopt the policy to help them, not to hinder them. So, and I don't think the policy needs to be very meaty. It can be a one-page, it can be a one-page policy. This is the policy of the regulating district when it comes to EV charging stations. You may end up putting one or two still water, whatever. You may, I'm not saying you will, but you never know, anybody up there is going to use an electric vehicle.
They have a guest arrive yesterday.
Maybe someday they'll be an electric snowmobile that they're going to plug in.
Now that probably be sooner.
So that'd be sooner.
Because you stop at a bar last year.
So this way you don't have to constantly go back. And then it's up to the board. The board creates the policy, let's say, you create your actual procedures. And then if there are issues with clashing, then I, I just think it would be better governance if we adopt that policy.
We're prepared to, to bring a, a formal policy to the board as early as its next meeting or whatever the board would like.
Yeah, wherever you get a timely.
You know, like we said, we're not going to have it until fall. Can we table it and just see if anything changes during that period of time? But we at least have a process in place now that what we started people be looking at.
Yeah, I don't, formally, I don't think you need to table anything. No, no motion is on the table now. We would just consult with the members prior to June meeting and prior to July meeting, if there is one. We know that the June meeting is being moved, so we're sort of taking, taking a look at EFC schedule and things like that. But we'll be ready to bring a formal policy.
Okay. And we're all in agreement, we don't need a yearly report. Does anybody want that? We don't want a yearly report. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, resolution to set salary rate at $17 per hour for temporary seasonal laborers in the Hudson River area and Black River area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you will recall, at the March 4 meeting, the board authorized the hiring of a combined maximum of six temporary seasonal labors in the Hudson and Black River areas at 15.42 per hour. Pursuant to the board's authorization at the April meeting, the district entered into a new three-year, three-year agreement with CSEA. The new agreement increases the hourly rate to $17 per hour for seasonal laborers. Resolution on page 23 of the board packet authorizes the hiring of temporary seasonal labors at the new rate of $17. Any questions? Do you have any questions?
When we discuss this, you have a good job getting people, am I correct?
Yes, yes, correct. Today we have one applicant.
You get many coming in or?
Just one.
What's up with this year? Well, we're, we're optimistic that the posting, the reposting the positions at $17 an hour will, will increase.
It's approved.
Correct. Pending your approval, I'll repost at 17.
I'm getting old. A seasonal job, $600, $80 a week. I understand that. I mean, I just, I guess I'm just getting old.
I know. Any further discussion? In this case, I do need a resolution. I'd like a, a motion to set the salary rate to $17 an hour for temporary seasonal labor. Second? I'll second that. Any opposed? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Staff and Committee report. Finance Committee, Mr. Wilson.
A report on discussion concerning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027 draft budget. Since we're all here with Mr. Manicha, who went through that, I don't think we have to go through again.
I'm with you. Anything you'd like to add?
Nothing that has come to mind in the last thirty minutes. I appreciate it.
And our General Counsel is not here. Did he leave a report?
His report appears on page 25 of your packet. And if you have any questions for Mr. Leslie, I can certainly bring them to him or reach out to him on vacation. But not, not in real time.
I could just mention one thing. If any of you do the training online and you have computer skills like mine, you probably want to get in there a little early. But I passed.
Congratulations.
I was worried that I wasn't going to be accounted. I think I was on twice.
Just to remind you, the 15th is coming. And if you haven't done your coke, that's, that's due on the 15th. I could say that because I've done it. Yeah, I can link you.
If you do it the first time, it's pretty easy.
Yeah. Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report is located on page 26 of the board packet. During the recording period, I performed the Hudson River Area Quarterly Compliance Audit and the monthly audit of the second dogga field office permit system to ensure compliance with our established policies and procedures. In addition, I attend a disability, accessibility and inclusion forum, the NWE retreat and the SDVOB conference and onboarded new staff. On pages 27 to 29, you will find the contact status sheets. The inclusion in your report packet is for your review and satisfied the public authority requirement. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, you have questions?
Any questions?
Stephanie, I got one here under your highlights. You attended a New York State Canal's diversity and inclusion conference in Rochester?
Yes. New York State Canal was offering a statewide conference on diversity, inclusion, and accessibility, and they invited other state agencies to attend.
Oh, there you go.
Very well. I learned a lot. It's for disability and inclusion. So unless you actually are thinking about it, I think in our daily lives, we don't really think about somebody with a disability or other needs, how, how they would access or not access a variance that exists.
And I can report Director Schrattin, who I know, you know well, and Mr. Hayes, who was very grateful that we were represented there. And it's great to, for him and the other participants to meet. Stephanie Ruzicki represented us very well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I was not able to get out there myself.
Chief Fiscal Officer, Mr. Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the CFO report on page 30 of the packet. I remain happy to report that the regulating district's cash position remains strong. Combined bank deposits and short-term investment pool investments roughly 3.1% higher than they were at the same time last year. Due to date net revenue, however, is not nearly as positive, largely due to the absence of now nearly 1.3 million. Regulating district would have received the Miri Bolhard hyperpower. They not walked away from the agreement, had been in existence for decades. And we have talked about finances of the deal this morning. So I'm happy to pause here and just offer to answer any questions that anybody has.
Just one thing about the money that we're missing. I mean, we didn't, Rob wasn't here, so we didn't go. Is that still moving forward with that?
Still moving forward with the Attorney General. Mr. Leslie is, is working very closely with the Assistant Attorney General. It's been assigned a case. The Attorney General's Office did receive a response from Brookfield in response to Attorney General's letter indicating, restating, I think, Brookfield's position, but also indicating that we're willing to have a conversation. And so we're still talking through the strategy with Attorney General's Office on whether and when to do that. But they're certainly ready and willing to take the support.
Just understanding, we, do we have to sue them to go after the money?
Well, that's essentially, I, I'm no attorney and I, and I stayed at Hilton Garden Inn, not a Holiday Inn Express last night. But the, I think the, the, the action in state court would, would be just that.
And they haven't started that yet?
Just, I, I think the answer is yes. In sending the demand letter and, and indicating what the next steps would be, including litigation. Yeah, I think the process has begun, but we're not before a judge yet. But that's where we're heading. And, and again, we believe that the case is very strong. If you look at it from just the basic issue of fairness, the basic issue of equity, this is a highly profitable, very large company. They generate North American hydro power each day. I think I have this right. What they were paying, what we are asking them to continue to pay us in a year. They make 1.5 a day. And now they are asking the taxpayers in Saratoga, Warren, Washington, Minnesota, and Albany County to help bankroll their increased profit margin. We think any court at any level, but certainly here in New York State, will see the disparity in that, the inherent injustice in that. And to say that you're paying one day, $1.5 million a year, for the same thing that you continue to get the next day, you're paying nothing. I, I think that sums up our argument. And I think that's a winning, a winning argument in a winning case. So, but as, as we sit here today, we can't plan on that revenue in the next.
Any other questions or comments?
Before we move beyond and onto the Chief Engineer, I'd like to also call your attention to the signed affidavit you find on page 53 of your packet, which lists necessary reasonable expenses incurred by a board member relating to participation in the board meeting. Article three, section two of the regulating district's laws require the board to approve payment for any reimbursement or any reimbursement can be made. So happy to answer any questions you may have before asking you to approve this, approve this.
Any, I'd like a motion to approve the, the expenses.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Next is Chief Engineer, Mr. Fulton.
Mr. Chairman, report begins on page 54. Thanks to your historic average precipitation in the Hudson and about three quarters of historic average precipitation in the month of April. All the resources, with the exception of, of still water now seeing an upend flow to completely refill. And still water lagging behind slightly. And it hasn't seen quite as much to that specific location as it was likely. But about two or three feet below our historic target for this time of year. But it's still also half a month to bay. We hope to get to our normal summertime peak elevation. And the weather is expected to be a little bit rainy for the next few weeks or so too. Unfortunately for those who don't like that. Also attached to my report, polyurethane yarn and design summary of the works at Indian Lake. Contractor continues to drill and drought at the non-overflow structure. Continue to make repairs and improvements to the spillway access bridge and as well as the gate structure. And work is picking up and moving along pretty nicely now. Continue to accelerate through the summer, the weather months also. As Executive Director mentioned, we continue to have some discussions with ESG, Hawkinsville. Dialogue continuing on the outstanding proposed change orders and capital payment. It's done, summarized it pretty well. So there's an awful lot I need to add to that. We continue to review the proposed change order. At some point, in the next several months, we'll pop them back to talk to you about that. Happy to answer any questions.
Indian Lake, you're drawing the water down here. Is that the beginning of the dam?
No, just coming down. You'll see on page, start from page 60, the graph. But we've, we've come back up to about the historic average now. It's more, more so that I don't like to get too far ahead early in the spring for refilling. You know, if we achieve the normal full elevation, if it's significantly early in for the date that we normally would or would like to, then I try to bring it down in the event that we have some additional influx, which historically, you know, we tend to do and see. But right now, we are slightly above the historic average and about six tenths below the target elevation. And some of the graph, actually the lake association. It's not showing on the specific graph, but the green line, the lake, you know, group association. We're fairly close to that elevation right now, which is at least the residents participating in the lake association prefer to see. Starting at the beginning. We're not making any changes specifically for the, the construction work. But we're still just paying back on that target.
Might be a possibility. The afternoon of our June 20th meeting, just had an opportunity to host the Indian Lake Association tour of the project. A lot of work going on there, a lot of work and leadership on the part of this board to advance the project. Probably late June will be a really good time to get out there and take a look. I'll take a look at the Chief Engineer about that. We do have, you can anticipate a robust agenda in June. But that would, that would maybe be a, a little bit of a cap on the day.
I, I think that, you know, like people around this Great Second Dogga could look at this and say, you know, this is pretty good. We're not draining the lake at Indian Lake. So maybe when we get them again at the Great Second Dogga, we're not going to be going down to the river.
We, we have the same, same plan to not deviate from the operating scheme when we get to the reconstruction and rebuilding of the compliment.
Very good. I keep telling people we're going to rename it the Second Dogga Plan.
That's why I'm getting all those calls.
Any other questions for, for Mr. Fulton?
Just a clarification. Mr. Reagan's corrected the statement that I made, the reimbursement for him that the board approved was for both March and April meetings, not just the April meetings. As I have suggested solely, that does not change.
I was at that training right then. We're going to be there, right?
Thank you, because they explained that to 225.
Apologies for the, my apologies for the mistake.
Noted, noted.
I, I did, I did round trip both ways.
Next, I'd like to call on our Chairman, Mr. Callahan, for a special presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If you joined us last night for dinner, you would have heard a lot of discussion about time spent at the regulating district specifically. A lot of this conversation was in relation to Mr. Hayes. But I, I was, kept waiting for Mr. Fulton to bring up his tenure here at the regulating district. He did not in, in conversation. And I was relieved because you'd hate to spoil the surprise. But I'm very happy to say, Mr. Fulton will join me up here, the Chief Engineer, that this marks his, this month marks his 25th year of service here at the regulating district. Can you talk about, talk about Rob? Having been here now a quarter of the regulating district's existence. And that's, that's no small feat. So this, this plaque is presented to Robert S. Fulton, Chief Engineer, in recognition of 25 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the people of New York State from the Hudson River, Black River Regulating District. And we're very, very happy to have you signing up for another 25. Chief Engineer, my best. So congratulations to Mr. Fulton.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much.
If you would imagine it's March of 2023. Let's take a trip back in time with me. We've canceled our meeting because of the snowstorm. But still, we do get together and we neglect to mark as significant, perhaps even more so, an occasion because now Stephanie Ruzicki is on year 26. But we also have the 25-year anniversary presented to Stephanie Ruzicki. If she will join me up here. This is presented to Stephanie V. Ruzicki, Director of Administrative Service, in recognition of 25 and counting years of dedicated and distinguished service to the people of New York State. Stephanie. And following the meeting, I hope that we can get a picture with the entire board and Ruzicki and Mr. Fulton. And I also invite everybody here to join me and Tim Manicha here in 20 years, where we'll be happy to advocate this ceremony. So in, in all sincerity, it's been, give you your commemorative box here as well. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with two professionals here that have made me more effective and this organization that much more dependable, reliable, effective, and dedicated in providing these critical services to people in New York State. I can't be more grateful to work with colleagues like Mr. Fulton and Stephanie Ruzicki, of course, Mr. Manicha, and the entire staff here at the regulating district.
I'm sorry. I'm cutting you off. Sorry. In terms of board point of view, I'd like to echo those statements. It's been a pleasure to work with both people, and we look forward to another 25 years.
Thank you. That was their dinner last night. How many years have you been associated there? You're well over 35. A third of the history of the regulating district. Oh, something. You pay $680 a week of time labor. And when you used to get 25 years back in the 1800s, you got to go watch. Maybe you have to do something with price of gold. I don't know.
Thank you. Next, we need a resolution for our next board meeting, which we have listed as the 20th of June at SFO. And that is, that change in dates for me, because I want to be here for the budget discussions.
We'll let you off the hook just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, because from a budget preparation standpoint, there are people around this table who are also grateful for a little extra time.
But that's the reason for the change in dates.
The Thursday.
Motion to accept the date?
Twenty is a June, right?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good to see you, Nicole. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations. Is everyone there?
Yes.
Thank you.